Good evening, I call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors February 12, 2024 meeting to order. This evening, we have Pastor Joe Naylor with us tonight. Would you please come to the podium and lead us in invocation and pledge, please?
Thank you. If everyone would rise, please, we'll pray and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pray. Mighty God in heaven, we thank you so much for this opportunity for each one to come here tonight to this place. God, we thank you for the citizens that are here tonight. God, we thank you for this Board of Supervisors here. And Lord, we pray that your hand would be upon the proceedings tonight. God, you chose these men and women that are before us to govern this county in accordance with your will and the good and will of these citizens. And God, we pray that that would be done tonight. God, pray that every conversation, every decision would be according to your will and for the good of these people. And God, we just ask that you help us to honor you in the things that are done here tonight. God, we know that you're interested in government because you established government. And God, you do care about what goes on in these meetings and in our government agencies. So God, we pray that you would be with us tonight and have your will and your way, for it's in Christ's Son, your Son's name we pray. Amen.
Now, have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Naylor. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Avilin?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Good evening and welcome, everyone, tonight to our regular board meeting. Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Anybody have any concerns, comments with the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, three of us were not present at some of the meetings for the minutes, but I think it's acceptable for us to vote still on the consent agenda.
That's right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Are there any comments? If not, Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Avilin?
Aye. Next item this evening is the Citizens' Comment Parrot. Could someone bring up the sign sheet, please? Again, with the Citizens' Comment Parrot, if I'll call your name, I'll ask you to come to the podium. You'll be given three minutes to speak, and please state your name and address for the record. The only person signed up this evening is Beth Trivett.
Beth Trivett, 211 John Smith Trail, Lenexa. Not speaking tonight as a taxpaying property owner, wife, mother, grandmother, neighbor, friend of the New Kent community at large. Tonight, I speak to you as a well-seasoned, results-based volunteer with over 30 years of service at this county and its residents, working harmoniously and tirelessly at times with hundreds of others to benefit thousands from all walks of life. I've been blessed to work on various diverse projects, to name a few. Babe Ruth Baseball, you know the mom sitting behind the plate keeping stats. New Kent High School Volunteer Coordinating, working with parents, New Kent Sheriff's Apartment. We had five years of Zebra, zero fatalities on New Kent streets after prom. Results: founding member of New Kent County Citizens Coalition, worked with the Commissioner of Revenue, who overhauled and quite literally wrote the book on county real estate assessments, assuring accuracy, and fairness for all. Results: second vice president of the Colonies Property Owners Association, worked with Mr. Hathaway, his staff, his admins, department supervisor Lockwood, and established protocols and policy to assure harmonious permitting procedures. Results: founding member, founding secretary, current deputy director, Lenexa Station 4 Auxiliary. Through the years, worked with the hosts of past board members, including Mr. Davis, Mr. Tiller, Ms. Page, Mr. Lockwood, current supervisors, Evelyn and Steers, to provide the New Kent Station 4 that we have now. Once again, Mr. Hathaway, you were involved with that as well. Results: after 13 years, my heartfelt thanks. Most recently, I was asked to serve on the Social Services Advisory Board, and it was truly a pleasure to serve the county in this capacity alongside other hardworking New Kent Social Services staff and other volunteers on the advisory board. Many were taken aback and shocked at the January Board of Supervisors work session when the newly-installed District 5 Supervisor chose to have me removed from this position in an unprecedented move prior to the completion of my current term of service. Imagine my shock. And that of Social Services staff who had, quote, "no idea," unquote, to learn of this without attendance at a meeting, making an earnest attempt to work together, making a conversation or attempting to make a conversation, courtesy of call, any form of communication. I believe most citizens expect a higher level of civility, professionalism, ethics, and maturity from those elected to serve. Heretofore, it would be unconscionable for most that we would witness political retribution in our beloved New Kent. God bless you. I love all of you. I thank you. It's always my honor.
Next item is the Residency Administrator's Report. Mr. Nguyen?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall Nguyen with VDOT. This past month, we received 128 work orders. Catching up some, we completed 213. Had two callouts this past month. We've been doing regular maintenance activities, pothole repair, grade nonhard surface shoulders, shoulder work, ditching, you can see it in the report, pipe replacement and cleaning, tree and brush removal and sign maintenance throughout the county as needed. Don't have anything else, not unless you have any questions or anything from me. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Ms. Stewart?
I think this is a question for now. Regarding a speed study, are you the best person to talk to about that for Good Hope Road on the more narrow end going towards Homestead?
If you can send me an email, we can-
Sure. And thank you for talking to me the past month. It's been really helpful, and I appreciate it very much. You answer every time I call.
Okay. That section of, what is it, 33 you asking about?
Good Hope Road.
No, I'm talking about the rubble strip.
Yes, yes.
I think that section is on our payment schedule this year.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Steers?
Mr. Nguyen, thanks for being here. And by chance, did you get a chance to check into the permits that we would need to plant the trees on?
Send me an email what you want to do, and I will get with my permit staff. And I'll, it's gonna be a LUPs permit is what it'll end up being. And I'll give you a step by step what needs to be done.
Okay.
Okay?
Just so my colleagues understand what we're talking about, for several years, I've been trying to get a group together to plant trees in the median and through throughout Providence Forest, make it look more like a village. And then, at Christmas time, we could put up lights and that kind of stuff. And now I have the New Kent Chamber of Commerce has come on board, and they're wanting to assist with this. So since we got some help, I thought now's the time to go forward with it.
Yeah.
But I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Mr. Nguyen, I just want to thank you for being so prompt and answering all my emails since the last time we met. I did just have one request. Did you have a chance to review yet the Kent-Hurst and 249 intersection? At the January meeting, I had a question from a citizen, said that the curve is really bad there, and they would really like something done about that.
Kent-Hurst in?
249.
249. I'll get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moyer?
Mr. Nguyen, thank you again for all you guys do, VDOT. I will be broken record about the traffic light at Marketplace and Route 60.
Yes.
Where are we with that?
That will be coming this summer.
This summer, okay.
This summer. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, and that's it.
Okay.
I met with Mr. Terry over on Mount Prospect Road this week, oh, last week. He's very helpful. And we had an issue also on Route 106 with the caving of some, I guess, water runoff ran up near a water line. And your staff was very helpful to help move some of that concrete. So I want to thank you for that. And Mr. Terry for all his help getting out, working with the county, getting all that-
Cleaned up.
-halfway straight. We still got a lot of work to do on it.
I got it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from the Heritage Public Library.
Hello. I'm Janet Woody, the Acting Director at Heritage Public Library. And I have with me tonight the real director of Heritage Public Library, Stacy Trombley. This is her first day, so I personally am very excited to have Stacy here. I also have colleagues, Elizabeth Zula and Board Member Rose Shuf. So if I mess up on anything, they will correct me. So I'm not sure what you want to hear from me, so I'm gonna say good stuff about the library.
That's good.
Our budget request to you asked for a 5% increase over last year, and this is so that we can upgrade a part-time position to full-time. The library runs with one full-time position, that would be me and now Stacy. So we would really benefit from having two full-time positions, so we can get a good leadership team and take care of our day-to-day operations and plan for the future. So I hope you will look at that request positively. Now I'll just list off some recent accomplishments that we are proud of. We are working with the Chickahominy Health District to provide space in the library, excuse me, losing my voice. We provide space in each library for them to teach the public how to administer Narcan in the case of a drug overdose. They come to the libraries on Wednesday mornings, and I think this is a good service for the public. Our chess program last Friday attracted 30 kids aged 10 to 18 to play chess. And it is hard to get kids that age to the library, so we're very pleased when they come to play chess. Since January 1st, our very popular passport program has served 35 citizens. I don't know if you know, you can come to one of our libraries and apply for a passport. We help with all the paperwork, and then we send that off to the State Department. This is a revenue generating program for us, and it's also, in my opinion, an excellent public service. We do make $35 for each passport, and we have to pay for the postage out of that $35. Our recent LEGO Robotics Spirograph program got so many sign-ups that we had to add a second session. And we enjoy doing the LEGO, the robotics things, because that fits into our STEM program, science, technology, engineering, and math. I can never remember the M. I want to say music, but that's not right. So my last little, little thought I want to float out there for you is to keep in mind the need for a larger building. Our building right over there at Maidstone, it's a great little building. We've gotten tremendous use out of it, and we are bursting at the seams. It is 5,700 square feet, and we use every inch. So as you're thinking about development in New Kent, I hope you'll think about a parcel of land. And I've heard that the Bottoms Bridge Quinton area is where a library should be. And think about a beautiful, modern library building that the citizens of New Kent deserve. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one question for the speaker. I'm sorry, I missed your name. I got so wrapped up in my excitement over the library. Your passport program, do y'all do the photos, too?
We do not. We would like to do that. And we're struggling with space to set up an appropriate photo booth, because the lighting has to be just right to take a passport photo.
But if they bring you the photo, you can do the rest and send off the application?
Yes, we send everything off.
Okay. And do you make appointments for that?
We do make appointments. You can go to our website and get an appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, that's a good point, though. That's when I got my last passport, I got, I went to Walgreens and got a picture and went there. It was very convenient. So that's a great service for the, for the citizens of the county. Thank you for all you do for the library. I know you're all busy. It's lagging all the time. My sister just moved back from her husband of the station in Mexico, and she's here for a little while. She's up there all the time. So thank you for all your programs and stuff you did.
Early for the public hearings. Let's go to elected officials' reports. Start, go this, you, Mr. Moyer, this time.
I held my first town hall last week on Thursday, attended by about 50 people. I had the fortunate that Mr. Hathaway, Mr. Smolnik, and Sheriff Bailey were there. So if I had a question that was unanswerable by me, they took care of things. And it was a good attendance, and I, I think everything's going okay in District 2 right now.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Pearson?
Well, I too had my first town hall last week on Tuesday at the Visitor Center, and it was very well-attended. And I just want to thank Mr. Hathaway, Mr. Smolnik, Mr. Everard, Mr. Lang, I think, is here also. He attended. Sheriff Bailey. It was a wonderful evening, and I appreciate everybody that came out for that. That was very nice. Just a couple of things I wanted to announce. The Bridges of Change Domestic Violent Shelter, the tickets are still, still available for the gala on Saturday, February 17th, at Rosie's. And on April 20th, the Gala for the Public Safety Foundation is also coming up. And those tickets are still available also.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Mrs. Steers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have not had a town hall meeting yet, but-
Neither.
I am the guest speaker at the Woodhaven Shores Annual Meeting, March 25th, and will be updating them on their problems that they have with their dam. Also, I meant something to you earlier today, Mr. Chairman. Summertime is a great time of year. Grass grows, and there is this one road called Kentland Trail, and it goes from Courthouse Road past Colonial Downs. I'm sure all of you know where that is. And in the last three or four years, I was fortunate enough to get beat out to add that to what they call their specialty mowing, where they'll mow it every three weeks instead of three times a year. And bless their hearts, they do the best they can, but a lot of times, they have emergencies come up, and they don't get to it. And especially on weekends like Memorial Day weekend, when all these builders and, or realtors are having open houses in there, and you've got grass that's three feet tall, it's not a pretty picture. So what I'd like to do, I think Mr. Hathaway did this a year or so ago, is to send out RFPs for individuals who would like to bid on possibly mowing that section and starting in March all the way through October. And the funds would not come out of taxpayers' money. It would come out of the Colonial Downs money that's funded to the county each week. So if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get permission to get Mr. Hathaway to do that. Thank you.
It's up to the, is the board okay? Getting some prices on that, then discussing it later? Okay.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Ms. Steers. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I too did not have a town hall, but I did hold office hours on January 27th at the beautiful Station 4. So thank you to Chief Opet for opening that up to me. And I had a really great opportunity to talk to some folks that weren't very willing to talk to me before, and I'm super glad they spent the time with me. We spent about two hours talking. And Greg Reimer and I, our school board representative for District 5, will be holding another set of office hours on March 5th. This one is going to be at Station 3. Our plan is to do these together, usually monthly, but periodically, and rotate between Barrensville and Lenexa, so everybody has a chance to come, because I know Barrensville people don't want to come to Lenexa and vice versa. But my door is always open, my phone's always on. I know my email's not working tonight, but it'll be working tomorrow. So I really invite you all to come out and share your concerns, because I'm not ready to hold a town hall yet, because I really don't feel like I have a lot to say. But I'm in listening mode, so I really want to know what's important to the residents of District 5. So I'd really encourage you to spend some time with me and Greg on March 5th at 5:30 at Station 3. I just want to share appreciation for all my other board members, especially Mr. Evelyn and Mr. Steers. I feel like I've learned more in the last 42 days than I ever knew was possible, and I just appreciate their mentorship. And Ms. Watkins, especially, for answering all my panicked technology calls. So just appreciation all the way around.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. I'd just kind of like to give a quick update. I know Cox has been pretty hard and heavy in District 5 and Ms. Stewart's, but we're finally in District 1. People are getting hooked up in the, in the Tallysville area, and it's moving down Old Church, and they are hooking people up every day. And I'm getting a lot of phone calls, so I do want to appreciate, appreciate Cox finally getting out to District 1 and getting some, my constituents hooked up, and they're very excited. And as of right now, I mean, it is the best internet that you can get anywhere. So all of New Kent is gonna be excited in, in three, four years to get hooked up to this fiber to the home. So we're excited about that. Anyway, next, staff reports. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The only report I have is we do have a spring shedding and shredding and recycling event coming up on March 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here in the Courthouse Complex. Oh, I'm sorry. April 20th. Okay. I think I looked at last year, so actually. April 20th, here in the Courthouse Complex. So there'll be more information to come on that. Those are usually big events, great turnout, so we'll definitely get the word out in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any of the other staff have any reports? Anybody have any other business? If not, we'll go to appointments delegated by district. Does anybody have appointments for their districts?
Yes, I have two. I moved to appoint Kurt Grand for the Transportation Safety Commission with a five-year term, starting immediately, ending 12/31/27. And also, I moved to appoint Robert Grave for the Transportation Safety Commission with a term ending- with a term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-four. That's taking, uh, somebody else's part of their term.
You got them, Ms. Watkins? Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I've got two. I moved to appoint Mr. Charles Bill Martin as District Five Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a four-year term beginning January one of this year and ending December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-seven. And then I moved to appoint Ms. Carol Kaufman as a District Five Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to complete a four-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Was, uh, was Bill already on the advisory?
He was not an official appointee. I believe he attends.
Bill Martin, okay. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I moved to appoint Dr. Kelly Bros as District Four Representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to complete a three-year term ending December thirty-one twenty-twenty-four. Thank you.
No other appointments? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointments delegated by district?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next appointments, not delegated by district. Anybody have any? I do have one. I moved to appoint Lee Tyson as an alternate representative to the Board of Zoning Appeals to complete a five-year term beginning January one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. There are no others. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members on appointments not delegated by district.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyers?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Last appointments are the regional boards and commissions. There's one. Not, not here.
I got you. I moved to appoint Reverend Dr. Milton Hathaway at New Kent's Planning Commission, Representative to the Plan, RBA Regional Planning District Commission, to serve a one-year term beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on the appointments of the regional boards and commissions?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyers?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers? And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Well, it's six-thirty, and we cannot do any more business until seven, so we'll take a roughly thirty-minute break, and we will come back at seven o'clock to start the public hearings.
Called the meeting back to order at seven o'clock so we can start our public hearings. First public hearing tonight is public hearing ordinance O dash zero nine, zero nine dash two three R one, create Liberty Landing Plan Unit Development, P U D dash O one dash twenty-two. Ms. La Duke.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the application and then invite the applicants up to give their presentation. Mr. Myrna of Bridgewater Crossing and applicants, and Jeff Geiger from Herschler have requested the rezoning from business into A one to planned unit development of approximately one hundred and eighteen acres of land. The applicants are proposing to create a mixed-use development with approximately sixty thousand square feet of commercial space along Route sixty, one hundred and forty-five townhomes, and one hundred and forty-five single-family residential lots. There are also designated open space areas, recreation areas, proposed clubhouses with amenities, and walking trails. The subject properties are located to the south of Route sixty across from the Five Lakes subdivision. The comprehensive plan designates these parcels as village. Liberty Landing is in keeping with the county's village vision of this area and is proposed to be comprised of a mixture of structures and uses. The application materials were reviewed by all county and state reviewing agencies and their comments will be addressed during the site planning stages. The Planning Commission considered this application at their meeting on April seventeenth and voted six to four to forward a favorable recommendation to the board. The board held several previous public hearings, the latest being in December, and voted to defer action on the case till tonight. Another hearing is being held tonight in order to consider some amendments to the draft ordinance, which they'll go over, and some proffers. Ordinance O dash zero nine dash twenty-three R one is before you for consideration, and I'll turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. La Duke. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jeff Geiger here on behalf of the applicant. Before I get into my presentation, I would like to extend thanks and appreciation to your excellent planning staff. They have worked with us diligently through this process and we have appreciated their input as we have gone, as we've gone through the process and arrived at the presentation today. My presentation today is going to be similar to the one that I gave to the board at the work session two weeks ago. I'd like to touch on the slides again, even though the board has heard it. We do have members of the public who may not. As I go through, I will point out a few changes we made based on feedback and comments we got at the work session. As Ms. La Duke noted, the request before you is in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan. And it also furthers the county's strategic plan, meeting many of the commercial goals and also residential goals that are espoused within the plan. Same visualization that we gave you, that we showed you two weeks ago, providing what the commercial area will look like along Route sixty. In particular, the provision of the small shop space that you have identified as a need in the county for the commercial businesses that you would like to attract. In addition, it will incorporate outdoor space for social gathering. In addition, we have provided several proffers. Since the request last had a public hearing, two particular changes that were provided at the request of the board was a contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for land acquisition for a new fire station in the Bottoms Bridge area, and a five-hundred in the Bottoms Bridge area, and a five hundred thousand dollar contribution for a traffic signal. Based on comments we received at the board, we wanted to let you know that we removed the condition that said if warranted during the ten-year period, we would pay the contribution. With this change, we are obligated to pay when warranted during the ten, the ten years. If we reach the end of the ten years and it has not been warranted, we still must pay. It then becomes a bond or a cash payment to the county, so that it is available after that ten-year period. Some other PUD ordinance changes that we have made for the community's benefit since the last public hearing was that we've added a requirement that the commercial buildings must architecturally front the Route sixty, as we showed in that elevation a few slides ago. We have expanded the front yard building setback to sixty-five feet. It was originally thirty feet. We added a requirement that the private pavement or parking spaces be set back a minimum of thirty feet. In addition, we have added a requirement that within the first four years after site plan approval, a minimum of ten thousand square feet of commercial building must be constructed. We've also included requirements for sheds constructed on the lot at the request of one of the supervisors, and that the homes would be marketed as for sale. The goal with that promise to you is that it won't show up as a rental community. And then we also restored the county's use for assisted living as a permitted use within the commercial area. As residents of the county may know, in the early two thousands, the county created a service district in Bombs Bridge for the installation of sewer capacity, and a service district was created. The service district is outlined in red here, showing the residents who are gonna pay an additional tax to repay bonds that were floated in order to install the sewer improvements. Last year, the board decided to remove that payment obligation from the residents who live in that service district. And now, the county, all rate payers within the county, will pay rates that will retire these bonds. If this request is approved, that obligation is removed from all the rate payers and will be paid by one property owner. How do we do this? We do this through the obligation to pay what are called availability fees, plus your standard connection fees. The total amount that has to be paid per residential unit is almost nineteen thousand dollars, and that goes to your Department of Public Utilities and results in almost five, five million, five hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, we are proffering cash payments for each single-family home equal to eight thousand dollars per home, and each townhome, four thousand dollars per townhome. This results in a total of almost one point eight million dollars to the county. With the request, we provided a fiscal analysis. This fiscal analysis is summarized here. Over the first ten years, as we develop the project and bring it to stabilization, you will see a net positive flow to your general fund of five point seven million. That includes the cash proffer payment I just mentioned, and a net positive of nine, nine million to your public utility fund. That is inclusive of the five million I just mentioned previously. After stabilization, the revenue coming in from the project pays the per-home education cost and results in a surplus of three thousand dollars per home. As we discussed at the work session, we did a more in-depth analysis on the school yield, and we found that using data provided by the school system, the yield from this project using the New Kent data will be less than what was projected in our fiscal impact analysis. As was mentioned by Ms. LaDuke, we do request a rezoning to the PUD designation. This request provides for controlled development that will pay off the Bombs Bridge sewer bonds, will provide funds towards land for the new fire station, and will provide funds for a new traffic signal, and also expands the tax revenue that the county will receive through the real estate taxes. The PUD request before you results in economical and efficient land use through a unified development plan. We look forward to creating a place where people can live, work, and visit in New Kent County. And one last thing we'd like to note is that open space within the project is at sixty-two acres or fifty-three percent of the total area for which the PUD request is before you. On behalf of the applicant, we request that the board approve the PUD application before the board. Be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. Does anybody have any questions right now, or we can wait till after the public hearing? I'll open up the public hearing. Sign up sheet, please. Thank you. Again, I'll call your name. I'll ask you to come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. We have one person signed up this evening, Debbie Stane.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Stane. I live at thirty seventy-five Pocahontas Trail, Clinton, Virginia. It's in the Bottoms Big Area. I do wanna thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I realize that this has been a very laborious and lengthy process for both the county and Jeff, what outstanding job you have just done. We've spoken many times. I appreciate that. With that being said, I feel that there is an obligation to not only the citizens of the county, but to those visiting, vacationing, and working to ensure that we maintain a safe, modern, inviting, and option-based county. To do so, it is my belief that the old saying of location, location, location really rings true. What has been proposed sounds like a grand idea, and God knows, the one point eight million is very, very attractive. However, is this the right location for this plan? I do believe that there are several reasons why the answer to that is no, and I'm gonna share my thoughts with you, and based on conversations with other community members, I think this is a shared belief. As you have heard in very, in many of the previous meetings, traffic on Route sixty is an issue on the best of days. Trying to get out of your driveway on Route sixty is a challenge, especially at the Longview and Route sixty crossing, where you must do a U-turn when you're leaving the Bottoms Bridge Auto Repair Shop or the New Kent Animal Hospital, and you wanna go west. Or if you leave the Five Lakes subdivision and the Rock Villa Creek, and you wanna go east. It's quite challenging to make those turns. My driveway is directly across from this section, and we witness this bottleneck on a daily basis with just the existing traffic. The potential growth of two hundred vehicles, and that's probably a low projection because most homes now have about two automobiles, is having to utilize that same path is really unspeakable. The crossover from the food line going east and the vehicles trying to get into the food line from the west requires the correct knowledge and skill for driving based on the very entertaining complaining in New Kent website, I'm sure you've seen what a debacle that's been. You already know that this is a serious safety concern. We should all know, of course, how to enter and exit this crossover, but surprisingly, some honestly, we do not. Think of the growth to that traffic, just that small traffic exchange. Existing businesses, can the volume be accommodated? It appears that most of our businesses are already suffering from lack of staff. New residents may improve that. However, this seems to be a theme in most small businesses. Trying to get waitstaff in a sit-down restaurant requires a ton of patience. Actually getting your meal served requires a ton more. Continuing to bring into the food lines, we've continued to do that, which is a great place to shop, don't get me wrong, but many days, the shelves can be bare, so you travel outside the county to grocery shop and to get a variety other than what food line offers. There's no competition there at all, yet we want our citizens to compete for road space, dining out, viable places to socialize, and educate our children. Is that my time?
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you twenty more seconds.
I'll give you a couple more, real quick ones. Okay. I'm the adjacent landowner to the proposed site, and on many occasions, my husband and I have had to clean the river area because it backs right up to the river area. We have to clean it from debris and trash. Now, of course, these are from trespassers, and this is at the end of our property, behind where the proposed site is going to be. So what safety is gonna be put into place to ensure that that natural beauty remains as it is? That's the Chickahominy. It's protected.
I'm gonna stop you there, Ms. Stane.
Okay, that's fine. Main point's made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Stane's the only one who signed up, so I'll close the public hearing this evening. Board members, do you have any comments for staff or the applicant, or Mr. Geiger?
Mr. Chairman, I got a statement and... Motion.
Oh, we got some more for you. Mr. Steers, you?
You eager little boy. Yeah, I just have a couple comments to make. And one, Mr. Geiger, I think you made your first presentations us back in May, was it last, last May? And nowhere in any of your proposals did it ever say anything about assisted living. And when we were leaving, let me finish, when we were leaving, you almost accosted me in the parking lot and said, Ron, the reason we don't have anything in there for assisted living is there is no demand for that. What has transpired since last May, that now there's a demand for a nursing convalescent or a rest home, which I assume that's assisted living? And how many, you said that you proposed twenty thousand square feet for the entire unit. How many units, how many apartments would that house?
Great, great questions. Great questions. I...
You don't know?
No, I can, I can answer the question.
You don't know?
Would you like me to answer the question? Doesn't house any apartments. Now, how many beds does it have?
So everybody's gonna just be in a twenty thousand square foot building with beds?
When you talk about assisted living, we talk about them in terms of beds, because we don't want them to be residences with a kitchen. And so, assisted living doesn't have a residence. You'll have a certain number of beds. And the number of beds that you would fit within a twenty thousand square foot building would depend on which user you're bringing in, you know, for that basis. And so, do I know the total number of beds that the user would bring in? No. Now, to your point, we were asked to add back in, we were asked at the review level to take out that particular use. After we heard from you, we put the use back in. That convalescent use is your use in your zoning ordinance for that particular assisted living use. And so, we worked with your staff to, to put that language back in at your request. Do we know that we have a user? No. But if somebody comes along and would like to put in a facility, then we have a, the zoning is in place to allow it, rather than having to come back and ask for an amendment. We thought twenty thousand would be the appropriate amount, because we didn't want the whole commercial area to become assisted living. We thought it would be better aligned with your strategic plan to make sure that we had the appropriate number of commercial uses there as well. So it would be symbiotic.
Well, then maybe your terminology is on assisted living is different from mine.
Okay.
Assisted living is where elderly people have an apartment. They usually have a big banquet hall. They have medical staff on duty twenty-four seven. That's assisted living. That's not what you're proposing.
That, that is, the, the language in there is what we have to use from your zoning ordinance. That's the use in your zoning ordinance. And so, that, in talking with your planning staff, that is the use we have to use for what you just described. But there are, there are no living units in it.
And why would this be placed up in the front, in the commercial area, instead of in the back, where it's peaceful and quiet?
From our development plan, we would have our standard living units, townhouses or single-family, in the back.
That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Geiger.
Mr. Steers, anybody, anybody else? Mr. Moyer?
It's a little tough to say, but I just wanna say that elections have consequences. We've heard this over and over again with different elections. And as a planning commissioner, I voted for this use, because it made sense for a site plan to be some residential and some commercial. But as I said, elections have consequences. I won by twenty votes. My opponent was very much against this project. And all I've heard since my election is the agreement that this is not the project we should have. So my motion... Can I read? Okay. I move to deny the application for ordinance O dash O nine dash two three R one, creating the Liberty Landing Planned Unit Development, PUD dash O one dash two two.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Any other comments? None. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Our next public hearing this evening is application CUP dash zero two dash two three, Polish Town Solar One, New Leaf Energy, and Jonathan Kenny, Resolution R dash zero two dash two four, conditional use permit to construct two megawatt solar system facility on approximately twenty-three acres, located with tax parcel twenty-seven six J in eastern New Kent County. Ms. LaDuke?
All right. Thank you, sir. This is the first presentation. I'll just give another briefing and then invite the applicants up to give their presentation. Representatives from New Leaf Energy have applied for a CUP to construct a two-megawatt solar facility in the land that Mr. Evelyn just described, so I won't read that again. There's a map in your packet for reference. The property is part of a larger parcel that is zoned industrial and is designated as industrial in the comprehensive plan. The New Kent County zoning ordinance requires a CUP in the industrial zoning district for a solar generation facility. The applicant held a community meeting a few months ago regarding the project and provided responses to all the questions and concerns that came up during the meeting, and I'm sure they'll address that with you tonight. The facility is proposed to be accessed off Polish Town Road, and after construction, the anticipated vehicle traffic generated from the facility will be one or two vehicles per day. The applicant will work with BDOT and the county throughout the construction period to ensure that the public roads utilized are properly maintained. The performance standards in the zoning ordinance, along with the proposed conditions written into the permit, will help to address visual and noise impacts the project may create. Buffers and screening will be required, and construction will be restricted to daylight hours. Decommissioning of the site to remove the project components and return the land... Decommissioning of the site to remove the project components and return the land to another permitted land use will also be required of the applicant at the end of the project life. The standards for review of conditional use permits are set forth in Section 98-744 of the county code and are listed in your staff memo. The planning commission considered this application at their meeting on December 18th and voted 7, 1, with three abstentions, to forward a favorable recommendation to the board. There are 18 proposed conditions in Resolution R-02-24. I'll introduce Jesse Robinson and Quentin Wood.
Hi, thanks for your time tonight. Like Kelly said, I'm Jesse Robinson, project developer with New Leaf Energy, and Quentin Wood is our project engineer. Okay, so New Leaf Energy, we are a company originally known as Borrego Solar that was formed by three brothers in California. We've been developing projects for about 40 years now and have developed over a gigawatt of solar across the country, including in California, New York, Illinois, Massachusetts, and now in Virginia. The project proposed tonight is a two-megawatt project, like Kelly mentioned, and it'll be participating in the RFP with Dominion Energy. Here are just a couple pictures of projects that New Leaf has developed to give an example of what they look like. The picture on the left shows a single-axis tracking system, which moves with the direction of the sun. In this case, it'll be a fixed-tilt system, so it'll stay in place. The top right picture is a transformer used for the project, and the bottom right are examples of inverters. There's not like a substation specifically for this project needed, like for larger projects. Okay, and this project is located off of Polish Town Road. You can see on the map here directly across from the Henrico County Jail and set back from Route 33, parcel 276J, Mr. John Kenny's parcel, also known as Weir Creek LLC. So a couple of reasons why we chose this site. Weir Creek LLC is interested in using a portion of its property for this use. He is pursuing Mr. Kenny's development on the front portion of the property, which I think the county is aware of. That's impermitting, I believe, our site plan. So that's moving forward. This project would not impact that development. Also, we are well tucked away off of Route 33, located off of Polish Town Road, and there are no surrounding neighbors. There's the Wereni Trail to the north, like I mentioned, the jail to the south, and the closest neighbor is around 1,300 feet away from this site. It's also going to be really well screened. Because there's existing vegetation, we don't need to take time for the trees to grow and screen the site. They're already tall, and we'll screen from day one. We're not impacting environmental resources with the location of this site, such as wetlands or FEMA. And then the infrastructure needed for interconnection is already located at the site. And staff found that this project preserves the existing rural character of the neighborhood. Just a closer picture of how far away the closest residence is. Okay, and like Kelly mentioned, we had a community meeting on December 6th for this project. We sent a couple of mailers in advance to folks within a mile and also had an ad in the newspaper. There were about 20 attendees at the meeting, and we've proposed about seven conditions for this project in response to what community members brought up at that meeting to help address their concerns. Also, after the meeting, we met with Mr. Sam Hyde and walked his property, just to see sort of what his experience has been on his site. We got to see his ponds. We are willing to be helpful stakeholders with Mr. Hyde and other community members, willing to address their concerns, including financially, if appropriate. All right, and the proposed layout is here. 15 acres fenced, 17 acres for the landscape buffer, stormwater features, and the access road. And we'll talk more on stormwater in a bit, but those will be down gradient of the panel layout. Okay, what has changed? The board saw this application last year, and we have changed the layout and adapted it in response to concerns that the board members brought up. So on this picture here, the orange outline shows what was proposed last year, 2022 specifically. The green is the new fence line, so you can see that we have downsized the layout. It used to be 22 acres, it's now 15 acres, and we dropped it a megawatt from three megawatts to two. Also, in direct response to feedback from the board of properly screening from Wereni Trail, we doubled the buffer along that trail, so it's now a minimum of 100 feet. And it's larger than that in other places. We reduced the impervious area of the site by 33%. And we also changed the layout of the access road, which I'll touch on here. So what's shown in blue was the original access road, which we will now use for temporary construction road, just so trucks can get through there accurately. But the new permanent access road is what's shown in orange, and that's to help screen the site even more from the road. We got feedback from the planning commission, they don't want a straight shot into any panels. So with this new orange road, they're screening from the road to the array. There'll be a 50-foot buffer along the front of the road, and then there's an additional 10 to 15 feet where the road enters the site and it curves around to the panel area, so you won't be able to have a direct view. This just conceptually shows sort of more aeroly, what that will look like. You can see the entranceway, some screening, and the panels. And this is a view of it from the street. So if you look straight down the access road, you don't have a shot into the layout of you. And then for landscape, like I mentioned, we've increased our buffers. So at the road, it's a minimum of 50 feet, in some places up to 250 feet of screening from Polish Town Road. And at Wereni Trail, minimum of 100 feet, and in the northwest corner, up to 250 feet in places of screening. And along the western side, also 100 feet. So it's about 13 and a half acres of trees that are reserved for vegetative buffer. And a couple of reasons why this area isn't well-suited, this particular portion of the parcel isn't well-suited for the industrial development. Like I mentioned before, the front portion is currently being developed. That will be subdivided off and become its own parcel. So there is no longer access to this portion of, there will be no access to this portion of the parcel from Route 33. It'll only be accessible off of Polish Town Road, which VDOT has commented is not suitable for long-term access from heavy trucks. The site is also, it's about 20% slope where we're citing these panels. So it would require significant grading for industrial use to go here, whereas the racking system we use is compatible with the existing grade of the site. Also, if a project were to go here, it doesn't preclude industrial development from going here after the project is removed or on the remaining portion of the property. Not counting the front portion, there's about 80 additional acres available that could still be used for industrial development.
So the previous slide talked about how we feel that the site is not meant for any type of industrial uses. I just wanted to bring up, on this particular slide, some of the by-right uses for industrials, that if the site was suitable, we wouldn't be in front of you tonight for our particular project. So out on the zoned industrial sites, you can have recycling centers, you can have different types of trailer storage yards, terminals, outdoor fire ranges, salvage yards, and even automobile graveyards. As far as like an automobile graveyard, that's something that probably potentially could go in there. And again, that is a by-right use within the industrial zone. And that's pulled right out of the zoning ordinance. In addition to that, the industrial zones do not permit any type of residential uses, parks, conservation or preservation areas within the zoning districts. The next couple of slides is going to focus on some of the proposed conditions. These were derived as part of our community meeting and some of the feedback. One of them is, and I'm not going to read it word for word, it's within your packet as well. But in general, the first one is focused in on the local workforce. And one of the proposed conditions is inclusion of local contractors as part of the bidding process for the construction and post-construction of the facility. The next condition was regarding emergency contacts. This would involve posting a placard or a poster card at the entrance, and that would contain various information regarding the site, including contact information for the owner, emergency contacts as to who to call, some general responsive information, and any other type of pertinent information pertaining to the facility, should an event occur. Another condition was vegetation management. This was brought up regarding some of the tall grass growth at some facilities. And what we're looking to do is to actually implement as part of our site plan, maintenance schedule and certain intervals at the landscaping will be maintained, and also just to ensure that the landscaping doesn't get up to the panels, so we don't have to worry about overgrowth. Another proposed condition was regarding stormwater control. Again, this would occur during the site plan. We'd be working with New Kent County as part of our stormwater BMP inspections, and we would include additional periodic inspections and maintenance of the stormwater facilities. And that was primarily just to address concerns of residents regarding any type of stormwater runoff or any erosional concerns that they may have. Another proposed condition is additional revenue. So we had initially came in with a offer of $50,000, and after reevaluating that, we thought that we'd be better suited to actually offer $100,000 upfront as a one-time payment to the county. So they would have the ability to do any type of future upgrades or maintenance to the Wareni Trail or any other item of interest to the county. That would just be something we would have to capture as part of the condition if you wanted to use it for something else. And that would also be paid upon issuance of the building permit. The, another condition was regarding fencing and wildlife. We had some residents' concerns regarding deer becoming entrapped. And DWR had actually published a study that had indicated that if your fencing was eight feet, that should exclude the deer from becoming entrapped within there. So what we're proposing to do is actually do an eight-foot-high chain-link fence with a one-foot-three strand barbed wire up top for a total of nine feet high, in order to prevent the deer from jumping the fence. The last proposed condition was regarding the transportation, which Kelly briefly touched on. This condition here just really captures not only the transportation plan, but it also highlights the use of that temporary construction access that Jesse had talked about earlier, and reverting to the actual permanent access road and then back to the temporary access road during decommissioning. Now, this slide here is just a conceptual view of the site looking north. Again, you can see the access road to the equipment within the center of the green. And as it comes down into the tree line, it'll make a left and then make a right to come out onto Polish Town, and you see the evergreens in behind there in order to block that line of sight into the facility. And we'd be maintaining the existing vegetation, which is very thick and dense along Polish Town Road, and also maintaining all the vegetation on the property on the backside from the Wahanie Trail, in order to minimize any visibility of the facility from the public road and from the trails. This picture here is just a visual visualization from the Wareni Trail. This is just an existing view. If you look at the top left, you can see the general position of where the photo was taken from the trail, which is looking down towards the site. And the site, just for reference, is the very thick, dark green stuff in the background. This is the second photo. This basically just shows how we're thinning out the trees in the back, but we're still maintaining that thick buffer along the front in order to adequately shield the project. This photo here is from Polish Town, so this is standing at the edge of where the temporary construction access is, and looking towards where the proposed permanent access road would be. And you can see the existing power line that we'd be tying into and the thick vegetation along the front side of the road. And then this photo shows what it would look like afterwards. You can see our utility poles on the backside where we'd be tying into the existing electric line that runs along Polish Town Road. And you can see how we're still maintaining that thick vegetation along the front. And then just beyond the screen, or the photo on the right side, is where the actual access road would come out onto Polish Town. So this slide here, there was a lot of concerns from community members regarding stormwater. As some of you may or may not know, DEQ had issued a memorandum regarding how they were to treat solar panels. So previously, they only considered the foundations of the panels themselves to be impervious. However, with the, I won't say recent, but with the memorandum from DEQ, we now consider the entire panel itself to be impervious. And what that does is that eventually, it just changes how we need to treat and store that runoff in the post-condition. Aside from the actual quantity, we also have to address the quality of the water as well. So we look at the pre-development, post-development aspect of this, from forest to, say, managed turf or impervious, and we have to implement different types of structural, non-structural BMPs in order to address that. In addition to the water quality, we have the quantity as well, so we have to analyze the pre-development, post-development flows for the 1, 2, and 10. And then at each one of those outfall structures, we also evaluate it for the 100-year to ensure that there isn't any type of erosion or flooding that occurs to downstream properties. This is just a general picture of the watershed for the particular project. It actually splits into two separate basins. And as you can see, I believe there's six different smaller watersheds for how the water would be running off. So we'd be looking to address each one of those individual points as part of our site plan. For the project, for the general construction, operation, maintenance, and decommissioning, to walk you through that. Construction, we anticipate taking anywhere from six to eight months. And as Kelly had noted, the construction hours is basically daylight, and it's within your packet as well. For the operation and maintenance, the project lifecycle is up to 40 years. We anticipate it being operated remotely with bi-weekly or monthly onsite visits, and we envision two to four long-term jobs associated with vegetation maintenance or the system maintenance. And then for the decommissioning of the facility, we would have a bond with the county prior to the beginning construction. The project would utilize Tier 1 panels that meet the T-clip requirements, so they'd be non-hazardous waste. And actually, the bulk material of these projects is recyclable or reusable, whether it be upcycled, reused, second-hand, or even disposed of at an approved facility. And we envision the system removal taking anywhere from four to six months. So some small-scale solar benefits. I think that one of the bigger ones here is that over the 40-year lifespan of the project, we did a quick analysis to look at the current taxes, assuming that it stays as is, and that would bring into the county around $55,000. As opposed to with the solar panels being in there, and this is only focusing in on the 15 acres itself, it would bring in a revenue of $362,000, which is a six-and-a-half amount increase from if it was to stay as is. Some of the other benefits to the small-scale solar is that it is a quiet neighbor. As previously mentioned, you know, we envisioned maybe one to two, at most, one to two vehicles a day. So you're not going to have an increase in traffic. We're not going to be needing any type of real public services. We would still coordinate with the fire department, of course, but we won't need any water, we won't need sewer, we wouldn't be pulling any real electricity, we'd be actually giving it back. We do create some temporary jobs for construction, along with long-term jobs, and we would also be improving just the local distribution line going out through in the overall reliability. And we would also be improving just the local distribution line going out through in the overall reliability of the grid. Some other concerns that we had received from neighbors is, will this affect our property value? And we have worked with a third-party vendor who has conducted these analysis on projects within Virginia. And they concluded that, they looked at houses before and after the sale, and they concluded that the property value did not change as a result of the solar project. So this slide here, and Kelly had mentioned it as well, focuses on the county's standards for conditional use. So some of the standards there is the proposed use should not be prejudicial to the character of the neighborhood. And as staff had reported, you know, we provided estimates for using local labor, local construction materials, and increased tax revenue. The project should adversely affect the general plans of the physical development of the county as embodied in the comprehensive plan. And the staff found that the project meets the goals of the comprehensive plan. The proposed use should not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or the general neighborhood nor impair the value of buildings and property in the surrounding areas. And the staff report states that the project preserves the county's existing rural character, protects the natural environment, and also the site will not impair the existing visual aesthetics. Some other standards was the proposed use shall not be unreasonably restricted or adequate supply of light, water, or air to adjacent property nor produce undue congestion in the street. And the staff found that the project will not cause any increased impacts to the county services. Now, the proposed use will provide adequate access to the facilities. And that's being addressed through part of our proposed transportation condition, which is included within your packet. The proposed use will be subject to any applicable site planning and performance standards. As noted in Article 22, we can discuss that on the next slide. And the proposed use shall be reasonable in terms of logistical, efficient, economical extension of public services, facilities serving the county, such as water. And the staff found that this project will not cause an increase to the impacts to the county services. Going back to that Article 22, which focuses in on the performance standards. This is just a real quick table. The first column is obviously the zone setbacks, landscape panel heights. The second column has a list of the different by-use rates. We also listed out the required requirements for solar and then what we had designed for. So for permitted zones via CUP, obviously, solar is only approved by a conditional use within industrial and agricultural. The setbacks within an industrial is 70 feet, 30 feet, and 30 feet for the rear. And that would be a setback to the buildings. For solar, we're required to be 100 feet back. Our particular project varies anywhere from 100 to 262 feet in setbacks. The landscape buffer for a by-right use within the industrial is 20 feet. For solar, it's 50 feet. We are proposing a landscape buffer varying width with 50 feet being the minimum along Polish Town Road in some areas, all the way up to 250 feet, when typically holding 100 foot as a general average. As far as the panel heights go, the building height within an industrial is 75 feet. The ordinance requires 25 feet. And we are proposing anywhere from 12 to 14 feet, depending upon the undulation of the ground, because we do put these panels on the existing ground with very minimal grading. And the fence height within the ordinance states six feet, and we're proposing eight feet. So hopefully, we've been able to demonstrate to you how our project's been able to comply with the county's standards. And we appreciate your time and please, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, Ms. Robinson. Is it okay if we do the public hearing, then questions are just in the back? I'll open up the public hearing. Thank you. All right, we have a few citizens signed up for this. So I think everybody's been here and they know the, what to do. So first on the list is Ms. Patty Peterson.
I'm here to ask-
Can you state your, please state your name and, I'm sorry, should I say, name and address for the-
I figured you all knew me anyway. Patty Peterson, 18,000 Stage Road, Barnesville.
Thank you.
And I'm here to ask for no vote to any and all future solar facilities in Barnesville. In my opinion, they are an eyesore. They displaced wildlife. They kill birds. With the heat they put off, the birds land on them and they think they're a lake and they land and dive into them. I found that on the internet today. I didn't know that before. But we have a lot of eagles here and that would be a shame. They pose a hazard to pilots from the glare. And our area often has the low-flying helicopters that are out there for training. And they affect the cell signal reception. There are fire risks. They cause erosion and lots of other things. But Dominion, you know, they're going, New Leaf will build this, turn it over to Dominion, and then who knows what's going to happen after that? And I just feel they can fill their quotas somewhere else and leave us local people alone and keep Barnesville rural like it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next, Jim Peterson.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to comment. My name's Jim Peterson. I'm at 18,060 Stage Road. That was my sister. That was just up here. We're neighbors. Two things I'd like to address. One, and I'm not just, you know, grabbing stuff off the internet. I was a fire protection specialist in the United States Air Force, and I spent 20 years consulting in environmental health and safety for 14, 500 companies. Two things that I haven't heard mentioned yet in proposal of this. We've talked about the risk of fire hazards. This is fairly new technology. The fires that are happening are not reported as solar farm fires. They're listed in the category of others, so you have to really dig to find them. In Australia and the UK, that is not the case. In Australia in particular, after they found solar farms about 10 years in, they found a six-fold increase in fires over the previous time period. As you've seen recently in states like California and Florida, when you have an increased risk of fire, you're seeing insurance companies pull out of markets. One instance I know of in particular, a person's premium went from $1,800 a year to $12,000 a year in one year. Basically, they were served with a failure to, or a non-renewal notice. Since this is so new, we don't know that that's going to happen here. We don't know what's going to happen 10 years down the road. And that brings me to the second point, which is the bond. It was stated that the materials are recyclable, and that is true. But the technology does not exist at this point to extract them in a cost-efficient manner. So really recycling these panels is a non-starter. Most of them get buried in landfills. We also don't know what the future's going to hold as far as those costs are. So if we ask them for a bond at this point, pick a number out of the hat, whatever it is, I would venture to say, like most things, it's not going to be enough when the time comes to decommission this site. And, you know, we're basically, we're trying to solve today questions that we really won't have the answers for for 10 to 20 or even 40 years, as has been stated. And those are my two big concerns. I think the technology is just too new to cram these into residential areas around surrounding properties where if you get a failure to renew your insurance, if you have a mortgage, you're done. You have to sell the property and you'll probably sell it at a loss. Or if you're paid off and you keep it, how do you insure yourself if that's possible? So these are some things that I've come into these reports recently, and I don't think I've heard them addressed adequately. Okay? Thank you.
Chalo Hodges? Chalo.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name's Chloe Hodges, 3101 Kensington Avenue. But I'm here today on behalf of Energy Right. Energy Right is a nonprofit that aims to help localities and their citizens navigate the clean energy landscape as it's changing in the state of Virginia from a conservative perspective. We educate on clean energy, so I'm not here to tell you how to vote today, just to kind of present some different information to you. We believe in all of the above energy strategy approach, and we focus on property rights and conservative ideals, so we look at it from that lens. I want to point out some different aspects of small-scale solar projects like this one. It's important to recognize that projects like this help to preserve the land. So because they're decommissioned after 20 to 40 years, it's really important to recognize that this land is preserved and then can be used for another use later on. Projects like these have minimal impact to their neighbors. They don't have much traffic, not much noise. They're buffered by trees and other types of vegetation. And other uses could be used in that location that wouldn't be necessarily as friendly neighbors. I also want to emphasize the importance of property rights. Property rights are a keystone to a capitalistic society. And it's important that we recognize that people have the right to do what they wish with their property as long as it's not impacting their neighbors in a negative way. I also think it's important to consider the fact that projects like these do add value to the community just outside of providing renewable energy. This project's going to generate six times more revenue in tax revenue for the county. And I think that's important to recognize. I also want to mention that projects like these are making a good faith effort to try to add value to the community by working with the locality to make sure that there are good practices in place when implementing projects like this one. As always, Energy Right can be a resource to you. If you have any questions about renewable energy in the future, please reach out to me. I'd be happy to discuss with any of you individually. And my name's Chloe, and I'd be happy to be a resource. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Next, Mr. Samuel Hyde.
Yeah, my name is Samuel Hyde, and I live at 5550 Laurel Acres Lane in Barrensville. We live right next door to the correctional solar facility off of Mount Nebo Road where we have received massive damage, you know, to our property from the time that they started construction there. And, you know, we've never have had much help to, you know, to try to get anything done about that damage. But I will give credit where credit's due and say that New Leaf's personnel have recently come out, at least, to look at that and try not to make the same mistakes. And our new supervisor, Ms. Stewart, has also showed a great interest in trying to look back at this and see what went wrong. And we appreciate that. But I just want to say that overall, I'm just not a big fan of solar. I think it's, I still think it is a very expensive way for us to go in this country. And I think we're just not, as citizens, residents, we're just not getting anything back in return. I don't think our bills will ever go down because of solar energy. I think we're just getting more expensive all the time. And I think it's very unreliable. You know, the last couple of days, I mean, we've had nothing but rain and clouds. I don't think there's been a whole lot of energy, you know, generated by solar the last couple of days in this area. And so, you know, I just, I just think that the day that we become as dependent as they're trying to make us on solar energy in this country, especially in the state of Virginia, they're trying to make us so dependent on it. I think when that day comes, that we'll be sitting around burning a lot of candles and firewood again and sitting around wondering why we don't have electricity. And I just think it's very unreliable. So I just would ask you all to please choose wisely and all, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Last person signed up this evening is Natalie Hyde.
My name is Natalie Hyde. I live at 5550 Laurel Acres Lane in Barrensville. I agree with absolutely everything that my husband has said. Some of you know about the damage at our property and some of you do not. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, and we will tell you. I do want to thank New Leaf and for their interest and for the effort that they have put forth. But I do want to make it known that I do not feel that it is their responsibility to clean up someone else's mess. I absolutely thank Ms. Stewart for taking action and for coming to see and seeing what she can do to help us and navigate the path that's before us to try to get something done to fix the damage that has been done. And if any of you want to come see, by all means, please come see. I always think companies, at least from what I've seen here in Barrensville, they want to come to places where the landowner does not live in New Kent County. They are not vested, the person that owns the property is not vested in the county. They don't live here. They don't experience our county day-to-day. And so sometimes you think, you know, they can't see it, so what do they care? And I also think too that follow the money. The money on these things is always in the front end. It's always on the front end of it. And the funding for these things, ultimately, if you really think of it and you really track the trail of money, it ultimately comes from us, from the people. And that's where it comes from. You know, you don't think about it, but it does. It does come down to us people. And are we really benefiting from it? Has your power bill come down? No, no, it really hasn't. And by the time it really does get paid for, it'll be time to decommission it. And I agree with Mr. Peterson about the fire. The fire danger, there was a fire in the solar field on Route 30 and where it took place. And if the wind had been blowing in the correct direction, it would have cut the, it would have caught the woods on fire right there. I mean, our, we're catty-corner. We were catty-corner where it happened. And the prevailing winds normally blow that way. And if they had been blowing good that day, it would have caught those woods on fire. And then we would have been in jeopardy. And so I just asked you, please, as my husband said, to, to, to think hard and vote wisely. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde. Now I'll close the public hearing. On this. Board members, do you have any comments for staff or Ms. Robinson or Mr. Wood?
Mr. Chair, I've got comments, of course. Firstly, I'd like to thank Ms. Robinson, Mr. Wood with New Leaf, and Ms. Hodges with Energy Right. They were, you know, right, probably 10 seconds after I decided to run, they reached out to talk to me about solar and helped really educate me on their organizations and what they want to do with this development. And I really appreciate the very transparent, open conversations we've been able to have over the last few months. I think it's been good for me, good for them, and good for the citizens of District Five. You know, I don't plan on addressing whether or not I believe solar is a good source of energy generation because I don't think that's what you guys care about from me. I do think that what you care about is whether or not we should have solar in District Five and in New Kent. And I vowed, just the same way I vowed to Jesse and Quentin and Chloe, to be transparent. I also vowed to represent the voices of the citizens in my district. And I think every citizen that spoke tonight was in my district. And they've made it very clear that they do not want solar in District Five. I wish that New Leaf had been the developer on the original solar farm because I think they're very intentional and deliberate with their approach. And we would have been better served by them five years ago. But now we kind of have a wound in our district with the Hyde's property that's not been fully healed. And I don't think that we are in the prime time for another one. But again, a lot of appreciation to Jesse, Quentin, Chloe, everyone, Mr. and Mrs. Hyde for sharing their time with me and, you know, really showing me what is important to Barrensville. I really appreciate it, and I will continue to be your voice. So, thank you.
Mr. Wood, can I ask any comments, Ms. Stewart?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You said that Borrego was the original group who started New Leaf. Is that correct? And they're in California, right?
Yeah, Borrego headquarters are in California.
What are you guys doing in New Kent County? What are you guys doing in New Kent County?
Well, we develop projects across the country. So I live in North Carolina, Quentin lives in Virginia Beach. So we're local.
But it does appear that, I think this is, I think Mr. Ellen and I have been through, what, four or five solar companies wanting to build in New Kent? I mean, you guys breed like rabbits. I mean, why is New Kent the place to come to try to take our farmland?
I mean, I think, sorry, go ahead. I would say probably the whole state of Virginia has been asking this question, and it's really just where there's policy is where there's solar projects. And with the Virginia Clean Economy Act, that's sort of what brought smaller projects to Virginia. So it's not just New Kent that's seeing projects, it's other counties as well. I'm happy to review the reasons we chose this parcel, if that's of interest.
No, I know why you did.
Okay.
And did you, ma'am, did you used to work for another solar company?
So Borrego, I worked with Borrego, and our name changed to New Leaf Energy last year, because we did development, EP construction, and maintenance, and the development-
So Borrego is no longer in business?
It's still in business.
So who would post the bond in 40 years?
So this project would participate in the Dominion RFP. So Dominion would ultimately own this project, they would be posting the bond.
Okay. You presented it last year. Oh, whatever.
You did.
Yes.
I remember you.
Yeah.
And we voted you down then?
And we adapted our layout to address your concerns.
Well, this one comment here, staff report states that projects, the solar project protects the county's existence of rural character.
That's from the staff report.
And protects the natural, the natural environment. I mean, I don't know what is so rural characteristic about a bunch of solar panels.
So I believe that's speaking as far as the landscape. So the last time we were in front of you about-
Michael.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So the last time we were in front of you, about a year ago, we had heard concerns from the Board of Supervisors regarding visibility of the facility from the warn-eye trail, also the visibility from Polish Town Road as well. So as part of that, we took that back. We downsized the system from a 3-megawatt, which put the fence line right within 50 feet of the proper line. We sucked that back in. We then bolstered the landscaping by trying to preserve additional trees. So that's what we're meaning by trying to keep that existing aesthetics for the rural character, is that when you drive by, you're not going to be able to see the facility, because we're still keeping that same scrub of various pines and small saplings that were out there, because that property was, I mean, it was basically timbered about 15 years ago. It is slated for industrial use, it's not for agricultural. And if you look at what the actual byright uses are for an industrial zone, one of them is not agricultural.
I saw that. Mr. Barnes, do you have a slide that you can throw up on the? That's kind of hard to read, but I'll read it to you. This is from Crystal Bright, who is the External Affairs Manager for Dominion Energy. And a year ago, November of '22, I asked her, with building all these solar farms, Dominion Power's purchased in the energy, are our power bills going to come down? And the answer, what a couple people have already said, she said, "Ron, I have an answer for you faster than I thought, and in line with what I was going to tell you as far as utility scale, solar impacting customers' bills. We're still in the construction phase of solar. We do not have all the solar facilities. We are estimating we will need to power our customers. As such, customers' rates will not decrease. While we work to install new solar facilities and even our offshore wind project, which I don't know how that's going, over the next 10 years, we expect customers' bills to be impacted to about a 3% increase per year. So why are we going solar?"
Because they're decommissioning their coal facilities, which are used as peaker plants in other areas of the state, because they can't comply with the air permitting requirements that's been passed down from the federal government. So in order to supplement that, they need to come up with alternative energy in order to meet those peak flow demands, which is why they're turning to solar and battery storage, along with wind and other type of natural gas plants. It's a top-down initiative, is literally what it is.
Right. There's also another slide. Right there, you guys are selling your energy to Dominion Power. Look at that field right there that you could plant thousands and thousands of solar panels.
Is that orientated north, south, or east-west?
Big part.
Is that orientated north, south, or east-west?
I think that goes east-west.
It goes east-west? You could probably put it a little bit-
Well, in this one section, I mean, it goes all through the county.
You have to account for the shading. If you look at those trees, those are 60, 80 feet high. When you start to analyze how that sun actually forecasts, when it comes up to when it sets, you have to evaluate the amount of hours that that panel's going to capture. So even though you have, I'll do a rough estimate, we'll assume that it's 200 feet wide, when you start to look at the orientation, the angle of where the position of the solar panels are, say it's 42 degrees, and you have the tilt of the earth and how the sun's hitting it, you're going to have shade that's going to cast out 80, 90 feet from below the trees, which is going to block the panels, so it's not going to be able to generate electricity, which is why we try to find these larger areas as opposed to try to corral them in and underneath power lines, where it's very narrow and you're standing right next to these 70-foot tall trees.
And then there's one other slide that shows what they're doing in South Korea. I mean, if you guys would get creative, there are solar panels in the middle of the interstate with a bicycle path underneath it. So now people can get good exercise, get a great source of energy, and go 90 miles an hour.
And I know that there's some people within the county that would like to see trees planted within the mediums, so they can put Christmas lights on.
What does that have to do with solar?
There's other uses within the mediums, such as vegetation, the landscaping to create these little microclimates. So if you go to put, like for South Korea, where they put the solar panels in within the medium and the bicycle paths, they might be able to do that, but from a owner aspect, it's an additional liability as far as crashes and things like that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If there are no other comments, I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny Resolution R-02-24.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any comments? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Ms. Pearson? Aye. Mr. Stiers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Motion denied. Our last public hearing tonight is Ordinance O-03-24, Amendments to New Kent County Code, Chapter 82, Articles 4, Articles 5 and 6. Our environmental director, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you tonight are proposed amendments to Chapter 82, Articles 5 and 6 of the New Kent County Code. During the 2023 Legislative Session of the General Assembly, changes were made to the laws governing both the wetland zoning ordinance and the coastal primary sand dune zoning ordinance relating to notification requirements and public hearings. New Kent County previously adopted both of these ordinances, so they're nothing new. The county code just needs to be amended to comply with the changes at the state level. The amendments to the Code of Virginia did not alter the substance of the ordinances, however, they did change some procedural aspects of how applications requiring public hearings are advertised. Additionally, staff has taken the opportunity to correct grammatical errors, capitalizations, and missing verbiage from prior amendments. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone signed up? No one signed up. I guess let's just clean up from what the state did. Has anybody got any questions or concerns about? Josh? I'll close the public hearing and entertain the motion.
Mr. Evelyn, I'll make a motion.
Ms. Pearson?
I move to adopt Ordinance O-03-24 to amend the New Kent County Code, Chapter 82, Article 5 and Article 6, to comply with the Code of Virginia relating to the Marine Resources Commission and Local Wetlands Board Permit Applications and Public Notice.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Any other comments? None. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Stiers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. That ends our public hearings tonight. Ms. Pearson, do you have an appointment?
Yes, I had one appointment that I would like to make. I apologize for doing this now and not before, but I'd like to move to appoint Mr. John Lockwood to the at-large Clean County Board, Clean County Committee.
And that's to serve January 1, 2023 to-
Sorry about that.
2026.
Yes.
Any others? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Stiers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. I was sitting there looking at this, and I have to, I'm sorry, I need to make one nomination too for the, I move to nominate Linwood Gregory for circuit court appointment as a member of the Board of Equalization to serve a term ending December 31, 2024. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Stiers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Our next meeting is scheduled for the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 11, 2024, and the next work session will be held Tuesday, February 27, 2024, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. There are no other, no other business to take here, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Mooreier. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Stiers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Mooreier?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Adjourned.